This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
This is the East Hampton Property Subcommittee Meeting of September 14th at 6:02 PM on Wednesday. This meeting is being conducted virtually per order of the governor. And it is one of several meetings that we've been having to see what we could do to come up with a plan for the reuse of the recently declared surplus by the school departments, schools, Maple Street, Peppin, and Center. I welcome everybody here. If we may take a quick look at the minutes, are we up to date on our minutes, Mr. Secretary?
We are one meeting behind, but we have submitted minutes today for two meetings ago, and there was meetings from last week that we did not vote on.
Right, so would we care to entertain any motions or discussion on those two sets of minutes? I did have a chance to read them, Omar.
I do read it too.
Yeah, but anybody can make the motion.
I will make a motion to approve the minute from August 31st, I think, is it?
I believe so. And do you also want to include the minutes from our last meeting?
I believe it was August 7th as well.
August 7th, so I make a motion to approve the minutes from August 7th on August 31st.
Alright, so I just wanted to include both, sorry. So, any discussion on those minutes?
We need to say.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
No.
I'll take a vote then. Counselor Gomez?
Aye.
Counselor Zaret?
Yes.
Counselor Krasinski?
Aye.
Good, I would hope that we could post those minutes as soon as possible, so they could become part of the record and folks could have a chance to take a look at them. As we do expect, hopefully, to be able to meet and discuss this on 21st. We had left off, we were looking at the various changes that had been made in the RFP as a result of the council meetings that we had and council discussions and the discussions with the public. So I would hope that we could get into that very thoroughly today if possible. Was there anything that the counselors cared to be sure that we covered today? Counselor Zaret? Can't see, I concede Omar, shake his head, no. Alright, good.
No, no, Mr. Chair, I mean, as I said last time, I'm satisfied with the changes that have been made. I think they take into consideration issues or concerns expressed by both city council members, other city stakeholders, as well as residents. I think they add a layer of robustness to the RFP as presented, and I don't, other than I think some mild editing or corrections that the consultant had recommended, I don't, I don't have any further comments.
Okay, I had some items for discussion with regard to the RFP, but I also had some general questions about, about the process and about better understanding the needs for affordable housing, so I was hoping that I might ask some of those and perhaps anybody could answer them. Emily may very well be able to handle these. It was, it would seem to me that we had a provision in here that discusses the levels of median income and, well, 80% is maximum that we would be allowed for being qualified as what subsidize, on the subsidized housing inventory, is that correct? 80% of the median income in the area? And so that would be one level, and then if there was a mix of housing, that would be weighted more heavily. So that would mean that, a mix of affordable housing, and that would presumably go all the way down to 30% of the median income, if I'm not mistaken. So I think the gradations were 30%, 50%. And was there another gradation at 60 or 65% that helps to, maybe Janet?
I'm just trying, I apologize for interrupting, are you talking about the RF, the document, the RFP?
Talking about the document and the RFP and the type of housings. And my concern basically is, I want to be sure to support affordable housing in the best way we possibly can and that we have, I would advocate unless someone can explain to me differently, that we should have a mix of types of affordable housing. And that that affordable housing include various levels of income limit, of income, not just the maximum income of 80% that we, I would advocate to have us entertain is all the way down, a mix all the way down to 30%. Which brings, leads me to another question, little bit off the mark, but let me bear with me. Are the types of housing, we didn't specify any particular types as being the priority. And I'm wondering, you know, between homeownership, rentals, the congregate housing? I'm concerned that I'm not sure how much congregate housing we have or what the need is here. And of course, everyone always mentions elderly housing, but I think that term and definition has changed back many years ago as a result of court cases, not to really be elderly housing per se. Maybe we could speak to that, and the purpose of that is to see if we have any preferences as to the type of housing or whether we have a choice in the matter. And also whether there's a local preference option that still remains. I know years ago, there used to be a local preference option. We're going to leave that totally up to the developer and the proposal, and maybe they have that in there, maybe they don't, or is that something that this community is thinking about? So, Emily, did you have any answers to those questions?
I'm happy to speak to the RFP. Yeah, and I don't know if Counselor Zaret wants to go first, I saw his hand go up, so.
Go ahead, Emily.
To him, to me. So in the RFP, you mentioned several different ranges, and I think those may well refer to the discussion of what is in the City of East Hampton's Housing Production Plan. In the criteria, we've left it very broad, and the reason we did this was to give maximum flexibility for the responses, so under evaluation criteria number one, we say that it's not advantageous to have units that are affordable to mostly higher AMIs and with a maximum AMI greater than 80%. Under advantageous, we say advantageous is across a wide range of AMIs, so that would certainly address your 60, your 30, with a maximum AMI of 80%. And then finally, highly advantageous is across a wide range of AMIs, maximum AMI of 80% and family sizes, and family sizes meaning the size of unit would accommodate families. So, so we didn't get as specific as your questions, which is why I was asking which document you were talking about, just to make sure I knew whether you were referring to the HPP or referring to the, to the RFP itself. You know, as, as the city putting conditions on what you put in, whether it's the different levels that you were talking about, Counselor, or whether it's putting in that local preference. Obviously, if that's something that you collectively are interested in, that should be in the RFP, so the developers are aware of it before they put their submission. You don't want a proposal coming in and then saying, oh, but wait, we'd like to change X, whatever X may be. So, but I just wanted to clarify what was in there now, if, to make sure that would help you in your conversations tonight.
Is there a reason not to have a local preference option?
No, there's not a reason to do that, I think the question again becomes, what we talked about the last two meetings was, what is the most flexible option in this environment? Given that we are in a very tricky development environment with the costs of construction, with the cost of labor, with the availability of labor, and with the obviously rising interest rates at this moment. So, where something you might have put in a few years ago, you know, that might have been more restrictive, could have been more appropriate then, it's a little hard to judge now, and we're just trying to keep it as open as possible so you get as many responses as possible. But again, it goes back to community values and community preferences, so.
I didn't hear it expressed in anywhere in any of the frequently asked questions or in the subject matter. So I'm going to presume it's not a big community factor.
It did not come up during this process, so, yeah.
That may be something that I certainly would be interested in hearing my fellow counselors' opinions on that matter. Counselor Zaret, you had your hand up before?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, a couple thoughts. One is that I wouldn't necessarily want to constrain developers too much. They can come to the council with proposals and we could accept them, reject them, or make recommendations to change them once the RFP has been presented. We have a housing production plan, I think that spells out pretty much the city's needs. That could potentially be referenced here in the RFP, just for the sake of not getting too overly complex in terms of the specific minutia and being too constraining in terms of what we spell out here. And we, there's also references to the, the planner might be able to speak to this too. I think the 40R district comes with its own kind of set of both kind of criteria and framework around it. So that in and of itself, I think, also to some degree defines the housing that may be recommended by a contractor. So those are just my thoughts at the risk of trying to kind of overly complicate this section of the RFP.
I just wondered if, if there are people in East Hampton who definitely would qualify, could benefit, and if they would be left out of the process because the pool was too large and it's not a matter of, well, the developer wouldn't have people to qualify for the units. I'm assuming that the need is there and that, and that there are local people, but is that need there for, in the local area, Janet?
Thank you, Chair, I am Janet Tatcher from the Housing Partnership. I think there's definitely a need, I think to your point there, unless it's changed, the state does allow for local preference up to 70% of the units. So it would be capped at a certain number of units. I think we've seen this most often come up during the permitting of the project. So, once, you know, once the developer's been chosen and the developer's going for their permits, we often see the local preference discussion come up during permitting. And so I do think that there is a need, but I also think we want to be really mindful of the demographics of East Hampton and that we want this to be a project that is available widely to the region and that, you know, folks may live in, work in East Hampton but live elsewhere. And so I think, you know, it's just something the council wants to think, would want to think about in terms of equity, given the demographics of our city, 70% local preference would likely mean mostly white households, so.
We certainly would want to make it equally accessible to as many people as possible who qualify. But oftentimes I hear that, well, somebody who works at Biggie's or an employee of a different organization that may not have the resources to pay a high rate of pay, who work and live here, really, I mean, they're, they're people I don't want to see have to leave the city, and I think that's the purpose, why we're focusing on affordable housing, is to make sure that we provide for folks who work and currently live here. To a certain percentage, not sure. Happy to entertain any other discussion on that subject, that topic. Nicole?
Yeah, I mean, certainly we want to make opportunities available to local, you know, or folks who live. I would just want to counter that, in that not everyone who works in East Hampton is white, and that's actually diversifying, as well as our high school is now about 73, which is different than our, our population, I think it's 88 or 89% white. So I just wanted to throw out there, and something else I learned is that there might be people who are qualified for the positions locally or the housing units locally, but there is annual paperwork that you have to do that puts off quite a few people as I was just, you know, researching that, so, or learning more about the, the process itself, about how, how you would obtain the apartment. I mean, yeah.
Any question, any, Jeff, are you going to respond to this specific question?
Yes.
Please do.
I mean, if you look through the submission requirements, you know, there is an item, I don't know if the numbering, I have an older version, but the numbering, so there is a narrative describing the provisions for affordable housing, lease-up and marketing strategies and long-term management. So I think we would expect the proposals to articulate the level of local preference that they, and they'll, they'll be doing that based on research and investigation of what the needs are and what the market will support, and then, and then they'll be proposing some, some level of that. And that may be the best way, that may be the best way to approach this, which is to give the flexibility and then to monitor that element when, when proposals come back in. The other quick thing, I think Counselor Zaret mentioned, is the housing production plan is certainly embedded all throughout this plan, and we would expect a housing developer to have looked carefully at that. So I think it's, it's already kind of baked in, so that's, that's embedded, and we would expect developers to be looking at that. So that would be the two cents I would offer.
Thank you. And again, this is open from homeownership units to congregate housing to apartments, any type of housing that would qualify. So I think we're trying to be as broad as possible, and I agree that we need to allow the developers to come up with a plan that really is as broad as possible. So, I have no need to bring it forth as a motion at this time, I just wanted us to be sure that we aired the topic and had a discussion of it. Counselor Gomez?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the housing needs, it's needed for more than the people in East Hampton. Having three curves, there are all three works in East Hampton or around East Hampton, especially two of them looking for apartments, and they couldn't find them, and they couldn't afford it. I understand the need of the local people, but every time that we we make rules in a community that is predominantly white, like 90%, and we have neighbors like Poliok, the people look like me, there's more than 50%, and we put those rules in place, those will keep my people to come to our city. Or we can leave, look at where I am, I'm the city council president. If I can fight for them to, to come to our city and be part of this beautiful, amazing community, I will do whatever in my power to welcome, welcome them and be part of this community.
I agree wholeheartedly with the concept of being open and welcoming. So I think we've discussed the subject and would see no need to add anything on a local option basis at this time. We'll see what the developers come up with in terms of their definition of need and where they think the market, the market is. That makes sense? Will the units all be automatically accessible or barrier free? That was a question. I'd like to just kind of explore to be sure that we're taking care of everyone's needs to the best of our ability here. Emily?
I'm just double checking the criteria. No, there's not a requirement that they all be, hang on. We say that the buildings must be updated to meet ADA standards and requirements, but that does not mean that every single unit is fully wheelchair accessible. That's something that you may want to consider, and I, yes.
I guess what I, what I'm thinking about is, is a minimum number of units to assure that there is, that it's reflective of the need in the region for accessible and barrier-free housing. That's why I bring it up. Michael Owen, if you're ready, prepared to address that subject, please do.
Through the chair, you might, we might see that state funding agencies or state funding sources for these affordable housing will say to the developers, yes, we understand you'll make the building ADA. We understand you'll have X number of, X number of rental units and/or homeownership units in this building. And then they will look for, for a number of barrier-accessible units, and that will allow the developer generally to score higher on the score sheet. So it's really driven, it's driven really a lot by what the market demands and what funding sources are looking for. And I think that you'll see that pan out that way. That's how I've seen affordable housing pan out in the past.
Janet? I see your hand is raised.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. There is a statewide requirement, I believe, for at least 5% of the units to be wheelchair accessible, and so that would be completely barrier-free with, you know, larger units, roll-in showers, lowered countertops. And then, you know, sometimes projects have additional, you know, other units. A lot of times, units also will have accessibility for people who are hearing impaired, so they'll have things that, you know, the smoke detectors flash and that kind of stuff. There's been a lot of work on the state level to increase the amount of accessibility that are required upon either new construction or substantial rehab, which is what this would be.
I'm feeling like we didn't, like we've totally left that out of the RFP. And Emily, I see you're shaking your, your head, is there a way that we can be sure to be, not raise the cost of the units? Because we don't want to increase the price, but some way to be sure that we're inclusive?
So I was, I was nodding my head because I was thinking back to another RFP that I'd worked on where we did have, you know, Jenna had mentioned the state minimum requirement. We had increased it above that state minimum requirement, but that was because it was specifically dealing with an elderly population, and so that there was a likelihood that more units would be required to be wheelchair-based. You know, that paragraph on page 24, it's the last bullet point where it says, or it talks about updating the building to meet the ADA requirements. We could sort of put something, you know, an additional bit of language in there, saying that, you know, we look also to, the city is also looking forward to accessible units as well. I'm trying to do the language on the fly here, but I guess it depends on whether or not you feel that it would be important to go above that 5% minimum to how specific you want that requirement to be. You know, there's, there's the level of emphasizing this is of concern, and then there's the level of putting it actually into a criteria. And, you know, I'm trying, trying to gauge your interest as to where it would go in the R, something, a modification like that would go in the RFP.
I want to be sure that we are as flexible as possible and yet as responsive to the needs of the larger regional number of folks who might be hearing impaired, who might be sight impaired, and whatever accessible or barrier-free units we can create, I think, I think it's really for the better because I don't, I'm not sure where else folks will go. And this could provide a very nice, safe place. Jeff, that, please.
Thank you, just to kind of echo what Janet said, you know, I think what, there may be a little lack of information available right now to, to the committee about what DHCD will require. You know, the primary funding source that these developers will be using is going to be through DHCD, and there are, you know, baseline requirements that need to be met. I would just urge us as a group to, to really carefully consider not going over what is the minimum requirement at this point, just because any additional items are going to impact the feasibility of the project overall. I mean, the, the catch-22 that we're finding ourselves in is that we, we may want to encourage, you know, an extra few ADA units, but given the nature of these buildings, it could be super challenging. These are not, this is not new construction, so new construction, it's a lot easier to work those units into the, to the pro forma. So just, I think, JP, I think the discussion is really good. I think understanding or knowing what the, you know, confirming that the DHCD requirement is 5% of the units, I think would be great, and I think if the RFP does anything different, maybe just echoing, you know, or stating it in the RFP, it doesn't seem necessary at this point because it'll be part of what a developer is incorporating anyway. But I would just be urging us to be really careful about not going above whatever the DHCD requirement is because it's that, the irony would be, you're trying to remove a barrier for creating a unit, but it'll be creating a barrier for the developer who, we actually want to create the unit. So it's a little double-edged sword by going above what DHCD requires.
Thank you. I'm, Michael?
Yeah, I just would echo what Greg said, I mean, what Jeff said about the physical, physical buildings. You may find the developers, I mean, we're in the RFP, we're encouraging these buildings to be preserved. The committee felt they contribute significantly to the character of, of the city. So you have that, you have that, you know, that balancing act. Developer may go to the state funding sources and say, wow, we can only get 3% barrier-free in these buildings, and they'll seek a waiver from the 5%. That's possible. It's also possible they can fit the 5% in perfectly on those ground floors. There are going to be some, some challenges here with buildings like Center School, which don't have any ground floor entries. So we're talking about some significant modifications to that building. And again, but again, I think I would echo what, what Jeff said. We don't want to go over the 5%, we may find that the developer meets that 5%. We may find that he asks for an exemption because it's economically infeasible to do it in these old buildings without tearing them down and having new construction. You know, all these developers are going to have to weigh, weigh these pros and cons of how they approach this development and responding to this RFP. So I just wanted to throw that out there real quick, and I'll just echo what Tom, Tom Brown said a few meetings ago. You know, we, we won't know what we get until we throw the fishing line out.
And we can accept, reject, or?
Yes, and, you know, I'll also throw out there the fact that, you know, the developer probably will seek CPA funding. So that is another, that is another hook that the, well, a CPA committee would have in terms of, do we want a local preference? How will you market these buildings? I imagine in the response to the RFP, we will get a fairly generic marketing plan from the developer. However, when the developer, whoever, whoever is ranked, the ranked developers, developer, come and talk to the city council, it'll be your opportunity to kind of flesh out what their marketing plan actually is. Will they reach out to local employers that have employees that are traveling more than 17 miles, 12 miles, one way to get home? You know, those are the folks they want to reach out to and, and say, we want you to be a part of this development. You're a low-income individual, you work here in the city, you live 12, 17 miles away. Come be a part of, part of the community you work in. Come be a part of, uh, part of the community you work in.
That certainly makes sense. Uh, as far as I'm concerned, I would like to leave that up to the developer and to the process that you mentioned. I appreciate the hooks of the CPA uh, for uh, for the future. And of course, the council has the ultimate acceptance and rejection of the proposal. So that being said, I, I, I wondered if there were any preferences among the group of the counselors regarding the buildings themselves. I know we have item number seven on the RFP. Emily, I don't know if you can pull that up?
Certainly. Let me just blow it up so you can see it and then if uh I can share.
Basically, the not, I'll, I'll try to introduce it while you pull it up. The not advantageous section says proposal does not address the retention of any of the existing buildings or historic components of the buildings. And then it goes on to say that at least one of the buildings and incorporates historic, that it retains at least one of the buildings uh and incorporates historic. Uh, so my question is, do we have a preference over which building is retained? Uh, if the building were, let's say, Pepin or Maple, would that be better than retaining center? As far as the community is concerned? Uh, and, and then if the proposal retains two, or rather, uh, if, if it were to be able to give additional flexibility and say, well, if you could retain two, would it be Pepin and Maple? That would be the two that would be preferred to be ma- uh, remain uh, and be retained. My sense is that if you retained either Pepin or Maple, that it would be advantageous. And my sense is that if it were Pepin and Maple, leaving out center, that that really would be highly advantageous and yet give the developer the flexibility of not having to retain all three buildings in order to reach that highly advantageous criteria designation. Uh, Counselor Zara.
Uh, yes, this is a very thoughtful question. Uh, but I do think that, I think that this is already addressed by the RFP itself with item two, which specifically addresses uh retention of Pepin Gym and or Cafeteria Auditorium. So it, it kind of preempts question seven in the sense that um, if you choose not to retain um, Pepin Building, uh, you get dou- double dinged because you'll get a, a not advantageous. Uh, you'll obviously not be retaining the cafeteria auditorium or gym in that case. You'll get a not advantageous mark on item two, which as we looked at some of the models might be heavily, more heavily weighted. And then obviously you also just get, get a non advantageous mark on question seven. So I think that it's what you're asking makes sense, but I think it's already baked into the recipe of the RFP, at least in my opinion.
Thank you. Still brings me back to the question of would we be better off with Pepin and with, with, with two buildings than by giving the highly advantageous to all three? Would that give the, the developer additional flexibility? Let's say if the, the language in highly advantageous said proposal retains two of the three buildings. Would that give greater flexibility? Jeff?
Thank you. I, I guess I'll take a shot at it and I, I don't, I think it's a question without an actual answer. What I, what I wonder about is, is so Counselor, because it's, you're kind of saying, you know, we're, would we be better off? And I don't think we know that until we send out the RFP and ask the developer world what, what is really going to be best for them? I think that's, and I know it's, it's important to find out what's best for the city, but we won't know that until we can understand what the dynamic is with the buildings. So a couple of things. Um, we did the fit tests. Um, that was one of the exercises we did with mass development and through the fit test. Um, we know that parking, uh, park like playground um, and the general green space can be accommodated with all three buildings intact. What we don't know is what kind of numbers the, a, a housing developer would need. So to, to meet, you know, they have to achieve a certain number of units to qualify for the tax credits and we don't know what their situation is going to be yet. Um, and ironically, the, the notion I heard was flec- get flexibility to remove center, but I just want to be mindful that going all, all the way back to the downtown plan, some of the architects that were on Emily's original team had, had really noted that that's actually the most easy, easy to convert to housing units. Um, and so, you know, we, we kind of want to give the, the full flexibility for a developer to really lay it out and figure out what's going to be um, the most advantageous for them and then meeting the criteria that we've established at the same time. So I just don't know that we will really have a, an answer to that at this point. Um, and it seems it seems just a little um anecdotal to suggest that two, you know, two buildings would be more advantageous. So I just don't know if that helps at all, but there are some of the dynamics that we want to make sure, and because it is certainly an option. And if they get dinged on one of those criteria for removing a building, we would probably be expecting them to make it up somewhere else. I mean, that's like.
I appreciate, I appreciate those comments and I appreciate the, the concept that, well, center may be the easiest. I was attempting to cut back through the number three to the number two to increase flexibility for the developers uh, in some way. Emily?
So I, I, to, to your point, Counselor, I think you could do not advan- advantageous is um, uh, that we're not doing any buildings, advantageous is one and highly advantageous is two, but leave the choice of which building up to the, or buildings up to the developer. I think that could work. Um, you know, there are, are, are initial, and, and that could work in the framework, Counselor, that you left, you, that you laid out just now. I think we'd included all three schools as highly advantageous, knowing that yes, that does reduce some flexibility for the um developer because they have to retain all three schools. But for some members of the community that we'd heard from, um, you know, there was a value to them to retaining the three schools. So I think that's the balance we're looking at in the highly advantageous category.
If I had a preference to make it more flexible and we had one building as being advantageous and two buildings as being highly advantageous, I would actually advocate for that. Uh, but Michael?
Just to follow up, uh, Center School, I think, is the, the most well laid out building for, for turning into housing. And in my estimation, if historic tax credits come into this uh, this development, uh, it is the building with the most preserved facade uh, and one of the most ornate facades uh remaining of the three buildings. It really has a uh, a strong historic character to it, other than the front facade of Pepin, which faces out onto Main Street, which is, which is very well known. Uh, you know, his historic.
And we look at that and it, and it looks quite, quite dramatic. Anyway, I, I would be happy to entertain a hap- having two be advantageous, or rather, one be advantageous and two be uh highly advantageous as a way of creating additional flexibility for the developer and the developer would make that choice themselves. They wouldn't have to do all three. Uh, I see the Nicole LaChapelle's hand.
Uh, yes.
You're gonna miss it, Nicole, it's right on.
Yeah, yeah. I, I wasn't, um, I know it's hard to see that. So I, I would suggest, or devil's advocate, that actually making two schools highly avitation advantageous um reduces our chances of getting community space. We know from our housing production plan as well as other affordable housing developers that they need as many, as many usable square feet for housing to actually make the low income housing and in even ownership work. And that there will certainly be space in each one of these buildings to have community space. To, to make that, to take that flexibility away from a developer who can present an idea for all three and community space is clearly something our city wants. On the other hand, if they can only do two buildings, there are plenty of other ways in this RFP grid to, to make up those points. Um, and, and I think that that's a part under 30B. I don't want to speak too much for Michael, who's kind of the expert for this, but I would say to put just, to make that advantageous using two buildings would cut our chances of community space in these buildings by one third.
But it's advantageous now as one building.
Yeah, I, 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 I mean.
That's what it says. It says if you do one building, it's advantageous.
But highly advantageous, yeah. Uh, ha- highly advantageous for, for two buildings. I, I think it, it limits our chances for community space. Because there will be fewer square feet for housing in general, not to mention affordable housing, which is more um expensive.
I just bring them up as, 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 as thoughts. I'm not tied to any of these ideas. I just want to be sure that the community considers them.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, before we jump off. I did have some questions about well, the, the Pep and number two. If you could put that up again, Emily, please.
Of course.
Proposal does not, is, is not advantageous, that the proposal does not retain either the Pep and Gym or the Cafeteria Auditorium. Uh, yeah. First of all, would anyone mind flipping auditorium and cafeteria? Because this really is the auditorium that I think we're trying to preserve out the cafeteria necessarily, but so this, this would give the emphasis on the auditorium. Uh, and, and then I, I for somehow calm, I, I put a comma there and then added accessible to the public. Uh, just so it wasn't that we didn't, well, we'll, we'll save the auditorium and we'll use it for the oh, you wanted it to be accessible to the public? Oh, gosh, no. Uh, so I was adding that comma just for, for clarity that it's not just the beauty of, of an auditorium we're trying to preserve, like the accessibility to the public. Uh, so I would put that in all three, not advantageous, advantageous and highly advantageous as a comma at the end. And I would ask that we consider, you know, they're advantageous and highly advantageous that rather than having the developer just present an option to retain the gym or the cafeteria, that they present a viable plan to retain the gym and the auditorium. Something more than, well, we put something in the RFP, but it, it's really pie in the sky. Uh, that would be my, my, my concern that the community wants to be sure that we have a viable plan. Emily?
Um, I, I saw Counselor that um, the mayor had raised her hand. I didn't want to jump out of her.
No, no, that, that's fine. I'm asking you of, if, about the difference between viable plan and an option to retain. I did see the mayor's hand. We will get to that.
If you, if you don't mind, I'm going to actually address your comma first, um, just from a formatting perspective and also a space perspective.
Sure.
I would put it um in, under the evaluation criteria column. So where it says Pep and Gym and Cafeteria Auditorium, we could put, retain it for public purpose. Um, so I would put it there rather than repeating it in each column. Um, if that, if that's a change you all want to make. Um, in terms of the option, uh, you know, again, uh, that does refer a little bit back to the requirements in three and four. So um, uh, yes, we could say plan, but the reason that the word option was used is because we're ac- asking them to tell us the difference between retaining one or both spaces for public purpose versus using those for affordable housing. So that's why it said option there. Um, I certainly have no issues in flipping auditorium uh and cafeteria around. That's an easy find and replace. So just to answer all three of your, or address all three of your comments.
So you see an option the same as a viable plan?
You could be more specific if you wanted to. Um, but I think as long as we're asking them to present both options, you may want to keep the word option in there. I think um, section four, which is the uh required components, addresses exactly what we're expecting from them uh relative to these areas. So um, I just would want to make sure we kept the language between those consistent and that is asking them to present two options.
And what would be those two options? The, the two options would be?
So let me, I'm going to um, by uh just scrolling up very quickly. Um, so in the, in number 13, the pro forma finance, sorry, I've got this on a two-page view, so it jumps around a little bit. Um, so we asked them, uh, if the Pep and Gym and Auditorium or both are retained, then they have to provide the supplementary narrative. Um, one side set of that narrative will say, these are how many affordable units that could be built here. Um, this is how much that could be happen if the, if the space is retained. These are the difference in development costs and um, these are the requirements that the city would have to meet in order to be able to uh have that space retained. And this is something that came out of our conversations, I think about two meetings ago, with understanding what the city would need to do in order to be able to enter into some sort of agreement with the uh, with the developer over the use of the space.
Well, it would seem a no-brainer that there would be fewer units. If, if, if the, if, if the auditorium and the gym aren't used for affordable housing, then they're not used.
But with respect, Counselor, it's the difference so that you, you collectively, the city understand what the difference is between the number of units and the space that you're getting for community use. So it's, are you losing two units in order to get the space? Are you losing 20 units in order to get the space? And is there a difference in terms of, I think one of the things that had come up in the conversations you all have are, you know, how much is it going to cost to operate this space? Um, the fact that the uh HVAC system is not actually attached. Uh, it's not sort of within the, the gym and auditorium stack itself. It's elsewhere. So there's going to be a cost to either pay for the utilities to the owner, the new owner of the buildings or to separate those systems. What are those? So that's what this section gets to is what are the implications of having that space either be affordable housing or be available for community use solely for the ability of the counselors to have information so that they can make a informed decision on what that should be. And again, that's why it's an option. We're asking them to present to, to the city, the possibility that this could be used for public space. But then what are the implications of that use on the rest of the program, on the overall costs and on future costs to the city?
Thank you for that ex- explanation. Uh, any counselors? Thoughts on that? Nicole, did you have something that you wanted to share on the subject?
Yeah, I have, um, actually, um, E- Emily addressed some of um, a question I have, but, but I would also like to bring forward to the public record that the city has made a substantial um, financial commitment to city space and a part of that arrangement includes public access. That will be ADA accessible. I would hate to use public money against each other when we've made a firm commitment um, to city space and have for several years and just put, we're asking to put aside 1.1 million dollars into that retained um account. Uh, I also am aware of uh, city space being extremely close and maybe it's a done deal for shared. Uh, I also am aware of, uh, city space being extremely close, and maybe it's a done deal for shared parking behind ESB to accommodate bigger, um, events. Uh, the other question is I, um, around i- is the the community space that would be preserved the way the RFP is, you know, while while I see revenue remaining or or revenue going to the city, my question really would be, um, given DPW, Park and Rec, and the library have no interest in this space and would find it too costly to maintain, and it also goes against our capital improvement plan to go more sustainable, how does that work? I mean, is it, is it automatically an another thing on the public, you know, kind of a a public budget? Because ho- honestly, the heating of that space even upgraded is is really nowhere near what the city plan is toward zero carbon and our climate resiliency. So that would be a significant budget change to, um, building or or whatnot. And and maybe that question can't be answered until we get proposals. I'm not I'm not sure, but my my budget red flag went up. Um, yeah.
That, that definitely is good, uh, to have that that red flag up and to be looking at the cost to the city. Which which, uh, well, in terms of community connections, if I may. So if the proposal creates a spot for, uh, a neighborhood playground, let's call it a, 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 a merry ground, uh, climbing bars and a slide. That would give somebody an advantageous position. And if they did three, that would give them a highly advantageous position. It would seem to me that would it be all that difficult to put what I just described on all three lots? A small playground and then all of a sudden now you've done three. So you're in the highly advantageous position. Is that really what we want, or were we looking more to have there be perhaps a playground at at a small playground, play area at each one? Uh, and both for the residents of the units and for the general community at large, and for there also to be some level of public parking. We heard it time and again over at, uh, Maple Street, and I've heard it for downtown, uh, to have parking there. So I'm I'm thinking maybe we if we increase the numbers, we'd be indicating that we're looking for more community connections than just a couple of playgrounds at three sites. So for example, if we said if there were six, then you'd have, well, you'd likely have public parking, you'd likely have neighborhood playgrounds, and you'd likely have some indoor community space. Be hard not to get to six without kind of getting some indoor community space included. And that way the community would get some additional benefit out of this as opposed to um, giving giving points for a couple of what I see as a rather small expense. Start with, uh, Counselor Zare.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Only one thought I had was I think, um, uh, committee member Gomez had raised the question a couple meetings ago about the old language that included a comma between, I think, parking and playground. I'm trying to remember what the exactly it was. It was parking and playground. And instead of having a comma removing it to basically tie them together, in other words, it should be both. As we talk about those and and the lang- and now that I'm looking at the the language for criterion three, it changed a little bit. And so tying together parking and playground as basically one criterion might kind of solve your question. Um, they would count as one, not as two, but I'm just, I just wanted to put that out there, both A for the record that that was, this was kind of brought up and B um, to just, I mean, I agree with you that um, it might be helpful to either increase the number of community connections or better clarify how they're tied together.
Emily, uh, Jeff and Emily, let's go to Jeff first.
Actually, if it's okay, maybe Emily could talk about the changes to the criteria, but I don't want to lose my chance to say something, but I think if if Emily wants to do that first, it might give some clarity.
Let's try that. Uh, you're not on speaker?
Sorry, thank you. Um, I have to apologize to Counselor Gomez. I think I misunderstood your, um, comment about the comma. So I put them into a bulleted list, uh, not realizing that you were trying to tie them together. So my apologies on that. Um, just one note, um, I am all in favor of additional, uh, community benefits. Um, no, no question about that. But one of the reasons and and I'm I'm certainly fine with whatever the counselors want to do in terms of tying these together or changing them. But I do want to note that one of the difficulties with these sites is that they're quite small. And so the playground plus the public parking plus the tenant parking plus the tenant-only amenities starts to use a lot of ground plain space. And, um, one of the things that we had, uh, done, uh, as part of this, or we worked on as part of this was some of the FITS studies, uh, Jeff had mentioned them earlier, uh, from Valley, Valley CDC that showed, and I think the one I'm thinking of is Maple Street, where it did show all three. There was room for the playground. There was room for the public parking, room for the tenant. Sorry, all four and room for tenant space, but it was very tight. And so, you know, without going to how many more things that you want to require, just being aware that that was consideration that went into our thinking.
Counselor Gomez?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Emily is in page twenty-four, but, um, uh, after reading it again, um, I'm kind of okay with it because I will trust the committee that will be reviewing all the proposal. And then it's coming back to the council, so we can review how this proposal will be including if they have the playground but not providing parking for the people of the community. So I I think the committee will be smart enough to say, you know what, how are you gonna, are you gonna uh, let people to come to the playground, but you're not gonna allow them to use the parking? Um, I will trust and the and the committee will review, uh, the proposals and I'm okay with that.
Jeff?
Thank you. Um, just to try to follow the thread of the conversation. So it started with the question about the viable plan and it brought us to a pretty different landing point, but um, a few things if I I want to just try to tie those together for a second. So, um, you know, we, the the parking and the playground were really important to community members, and that was really loud and clear through the, through the, all the listening sections. Um, as was the gymnasium, and I think that that was really sort of the initial starts of these discussions, and the the RFP was structured that way to at least be responsive to those. Over the last, you know, couple months, um, the upstairs and the auditorium and the cafeteria have been added in. Uh, but I think I think we just need to be really mindful of who will be the beneficiary of certain, certain things coming out of this. Um, so the beneficiary has to be just, you know, a city council will review the proposals, I think, because as Gomez just mentioned, that that's going to be really important because I think you're, you're narrowing down the group. As you get upstairs, the it's the narrowest group of people who might benefit from the community theater idea or that space. But I just wanted to make the point that every time we ask for something or every time that we expect something out of the development, those are costs that the developer will incur. So we just need to be really mindful as we increase the number of community benefits that we expect to see, we're making it harder. We're making it harder to get what the the highest priority was affordable housing. So we just want to and and I I think everyone said that. So I just want to keep in mind this little pendulum as we move things around. The thing we're going to sacrifice is affordable housing. Um, but then to get back to the viable plan question that Counselor Kuzinski started with, um, you know, I looked it up, the, I'm a pretty, I'm pretty fond of looking up the the dictionary definition of words because they that's, that's, that's really important. So capable of working successfully and feasible is kind of viable. So I just want to be mindful that, you know, as we ask for more space to be set aside, um, we have written in that the city is, um, we we toyed with the word expecting versus would consider, you know, be part of that equation. So I don't think we can determine, well, I think the developer can determine what's viable. They're going to provide us with what's financially necessary, and I think the city council is going to determine what's viable because the city, the more things that we've asked for, especially with with respect to PEP and the more the city is going to be at the table financially, and I think those are the things that will determine what's viable. So the that word, um, Counselor Kuzinski is a little tricky, so I want to pinpoint that. But the last time we met, we had some phrasing at the beginning that we we talked about, talking about tonight, which was whether the city expects to, um, be leasing these spaces or would consider. And so those two words are, to me, they're tied together and are important for us to just toy with a little bit more tonight. Um, so thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Zare?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I think just to point out an ongoing theme here that, um, the, um, the RFP is really a set of of guidelines and to some degree weighted guidelines. Um, and I I want to agree with the planner that, um, if we s- if we start placing too many expectations or requirements here, we really narrow the field in terms of what offers we can get. And there's nothing within this document that prohibits developers from being creative, from offering things that aren't even in here, from offering more community spaces or different community spaces. You know, I don't feel like a developer is going to come to us and say, hey, I have three spaces. We're done here. I have a feeling that they're going to be, we're going to get offers that are respectful and thoughtful to the community. Um, and so I, again, I I'm, I'm pretty happy with what we we have because I think it offers a pretty robust framework for what we're we're looking for and and al- also offers some flexibility and creativity.
I certainly would be hopeful that the developers would be creative. But every time we talk about what's important to the community and trying to tie it down as well, being important to the community. We hear that and somehow that may cut down the number of of units or the cost of the project, increase the cost of the project. So I am not hopeful that the developer is going to be really creative and come up with a lot of great new ideas that, uh, are going to be benefits for the community. So that's why I wanted to tie down as many as we could now rather than later when I think we're in a much better position here than we are later. Jeff, I see your hand again.
Sorry, you said something really important, and I just wanted to echo it and and support you because it it it's, I I, we're not trying to portray that message exactly that it's always about reducing the number of units. The the real fear is that we will not get proposals and that that's that's the the ultimate worst-case scenario, I think, is if 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 we have made it so difficult to look at this that we will get nothing. And so it's just that balance in between, you know, this this equation that we're trying to build here and just being mindful of that. So, um, I think so far this is great. I think if we're creating a really good RFP where we've articulated um, a lot of what the community is hoping for, and it's, it's going to be kind of a wait and see. Um, and that was, that's the only emphasis we're really trying to place on this is that we we want to get proposals and we want to get the widest number of proposals so that we can get the creativity and see what, see what really the market will kind of support out there. So just a finer point on that, but it was a good, it was a good point.
I, uh, thank you. That being said, uh, if we could just move on briefly to number eleven quickly, timing. The shorter, uh, the faster the respondent gets their certificate of occupancy and lease up seems to be weighted to the advan- more advantageous side. If if they took longer than eighteen months between twelve eighteen or between six and twelve, though, that's the scale that we're talking about is how quickly you get your CO and your lease up. I'm wondering if if we really need to have that as a criteria, and the reason I'm mentioning that is I'm thinking with COVID and with supply chain issues, I think we could get a lot of failures there. Folks who otherwise can do the job, it did projects, got through it, communities are happy, but just the COs and the lease lease ups took time because, well, we're in really unusual times these last two years. Emily?
I think that's a a fair statement to make. Uh, in fact, on the planning side, I saw a proposal recently, uh, or a request for proposal recently that was asking planners who, uh, um, you know, did you complete all of your projects in the last three years on time? And I said, well, I'm not sure any planner has done that in the last three years. So, um, uh, you know, I I put that in to distinguish it from the, um, the other schedule that we had in there in terms of city control. It wasn't in the original RFP, and it came out of some of the discussion, I think, that we'd had in the first meeting where I joined you all. But, um, I don't know, given the conditions, that it's necessary. It's also something that should come out in the interviews with, uh, both the developers themselves and, um, also with the, uh, the interviews with their references. So that is something that could actually be tied to the interview questions, which is something that we would discuss, um, uh, or you you all, uh, would discuss at a later date. Um, uh, but I would, I would not have an issue with taking this out and moving it to an interview question. And I think that's a very fair, uh, statement on your part, that circumstances would make it difficult for almost anybody to, um, uh, to meet this at this point.
So they wouldn't want to hold it against the developer. Uh, Michael, I I I'm looking to you, being the the purchasing agent. What are your thoughts? Does it leave more flexibility for and or do we need to have this timing issue?
You know, I I think, uh, I think it's not necessary. I think I I agree with Emily. Uh, again, uh, city will have a lot of opportunity, uh, well, not a lot, they'll have opportunity through the permitting process, the FORDR process, and through the CPA application and award to kind of flush out some of these issues. But yeah, yeah, I I, you know, you, we've got, I think, eleven, eleven criteria now. Dropping one would not would would not, dropping this one, I don't think would be a, be a major loss to the RFP.
I'm happy to make that change, counselors, if you all agree.
Counselor Zare, Counselor Gomez, I see your hand.
He's a doctor, sorry, first, that's why I'm waiting.
I I didn't see Counselor's hand.
Um, I'm, I'm okay if uh, Michael and Emily is okay to eliminate, uh, number eleven and totally. Uh, my concern is there, um, we have to present this RFP tomorrow for the package and the agenda. So if you're going to do it, we have to do it tonight at this meeting, I will make a motion uh, to remove if Emily is okay and Michael is okay, I will make a motion to, uh, eliminate, uh, number eleven from their RFP. And, uh, then we do the numbers from this control. You know what I mean? So, but I will make a motion to eliminate the whole section on on number eleven.
Is there a second?
Second.
With a motion and a second, is there further discussion on the removal of timing number eleven from the RFP? Counselor Zare?
I'm fine with removing it. My only comment is, uh, if there's issues affecting time and they're going to affect everyone, so everyone's scores are going to be, uh, skewed. So it's kind of, it's a, it's a, it's 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 a constant. It becomes a constant to everybody. So, you know, but in the, in the broader scheme of things, if we're universally saying that it doesn't matter, and, you know, I I like to rely on the experts. I agree with my my colleague, if, uh, if our consultant and Mr. Owens says they don't need it, then just take it out.
Any further discussion? Then let's call for a vote. Counselor Gomez?
Aye.
Counselor Zare? Counselor Zaret?
Aye, aye.
Counselor Krasinski, aye. And I think that can be accomplished easily tonight so that we can put together the packet for tomorrow for the RFP. Any other thoughts about the RFP? I would entertain a motion to approve the RFP or may make the recommendation to, uh, to the council to approve the RFP as, and submit to the mayor. Uh, but I see, Jeff, you raised your hand.
Yes, very sorry because that was, it sounded like a great motion you were about to make. Um, we had, we had flagged the, the question about, it's, it's one word, but it's an important word. It was, I, I forget what page it was on. Um, Emily, maybe you can assist, but it was in terms of, of describing that the city would expect to enter into a public-private partnership. And we had talked about that. And I think it's important if we can just have that clarification discussion about where we want to, where this, where's, where the property subject may want to land on that.
Is there a difference between the word e- e- expect and anticipate? Entering into rather than expect. It still broaches the subject. Maybe we did a different word. Counselor Zaret?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I mean, I think this is sort of, uh, like in writing ordinance language in terms of, uh, using shall or may. Um, and so I, I understand with the planner that there, there, you, uh, expect creates significant is like shall, um, creates more stringent, um, uh, framework around that. Um, I think anticipate means that it's a preference and it's a strong preference. You can potentially come up with a better word than that. Um, but, um, I think these all point to basically, you know, we're establishing a set of desires that we want from people. And certainly this is a, the, the use of that space or the pu- the public-private partnership concept is, is a desire. These are all desires and ultimately, you know, the developers may not come back with any of them or come back with some of them. So I just, you know, and the city may, they just may not want to enter into a partnership too. So, uh, these are things that are reflective of community interests and I think stakeholder interests. And so it's, I feel including it in there is reflective of that broader process, but using language like, um, expect I think might be strong. I agree with the planner there. We just want to make sure that we're, we're opening it up. And if for some reason someone doesn't come back with a plan that includes that, we can certainly comment on that.
Emily?
Thank you, counselor. Uh, with respect, I think we had talked last time about changing it from expect to consider. Uh, I agree with Counselor Zaret that, uh, it's getting close to the city shall, uh, enter into an agreement and we don't want that to happen. We really want more of a may, uh, enter into an agreement. And I think consider, um, allows that to happen. So if the developer proposes this, we, the city will consider, uh, moving, moving forward with that option. I think that preserves um, the city's ability to act in different ways, uh, a little bit better than expect or, or even anticipate might.
Planner Bag, is consider acceptable in your eyes?
Yeah, much more so. And again, I, I don't mean to belabor it, but I think it's an important point because it's tied to the notion of, of the city potentially leasing out space to which we do not know. You know, that's the, that's the information we're going to get is i- i- if it, if it works out right, they'll provide us with financial information about what's necessary for the city to be in that public-private partnership and, and that, the consider that. I think that's, that's really what we want to be able to consider is, is that information. I do think it would feel a little misleading to, to have someone expect, um, to say that we expect to do that because there have been no votes, um, by anyone budget-wise to support doing that. But I think consider it, I think as Emily, I think perfectly described it as it gives, it preserves the city's ability to act in different ways. And I think that's really, really key.
Thank you, Counselor Zaret.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And furthermore too, um, by, by having the word expect, which I agree considers better, it, it almost says that that's the dynamic, that's the only dynamic that can exist. And for instance, developer could consider not even have a private-public partnership. They could just offer it as free public space that we don't even have around. So having the word consider in there offers a lot more options too. If it's, if we said expect, then we're saying that's the relationship that's going to occur. Um, and when we're talking about public spaces and shared spaces and things like that, um, you know, we, there's an opportunity here for a developer to say, hey, I'm going to put in a community room and it's for everybody to use, um, and it's free. So.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to place the word consider in replacement for expect.
So moved.
Before, I, can you specify in what page?
Emily?
Exactly where? Because I see consider in page 25. So if we're talking another, uh,
You're correct, counselor. It's page 25. That's right. Um, so C evaluation criteria number two, the city would expect to enter to, uh,
Okay, I see that. Yeah, yeah. I see that one. I was looking at the, but the second one, the second consider. Okay, I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to exchange the word accept to consider or expect to consider rather, expect to consider, uh, on page 25. Any further discussion? That being said, I'll let it vote to Counselor Gomez.
Aye.
Zaret?
Aye.
Krasinski, aye. Motion passes. Any other immediate changes that we see? Jeff?
Um, you might think be later. I'm not sure. I'm sorry. Um, it's not a change. It's just information that you had asked for prior and had come up, um, when the city council was making its motions to accept the school property. So, you know, there is a question about the title uh, for Pepin School Property and the Associated Parking Lot. Um, and so I did relay, it was late this afternoon to, to the committee that the city attorneys looked at this. They have not found a document yet, which, which I didn't like, which proves that the city owns these. But in his, in his opinion and his, his, uh, his title, um, he has a title, um, person doing the title research that they don't believe it prevents us from releasing the RFP. And the cure, the cure for it will be potentially to file a suit in superior court. And it's to quiet title, which is a, it's a fairly common thing that can happen. And the reason why I'm, I'm mentioning this is because there, the mechanism to do this in the city solicitor's opinion is in the purchase and sale agreement. And so, um, you know, we have the RFP, um, which we've gone really well, we've gone over really well. And then there's some associated, uh, attachments and the purchase and sale is one of them. And so it was the, the, the draft was provided to city council and there's reference in there to ways that, um, the title, um, the city has opportunity to clear the title throughout the process. And so, um, that was relatively important at the last couple of discussions. So I wanted to identify that the purchase and sale agreement will be the mechanism and the city may have to take some steps in after the RFP is released to, to do this. But, um, city solicitor didn't, you know, and, and Counselor Krasinski, I related kind of the concern that you had about other properties or other municipalities that had hit snags. And he, he really believed that because the property was acquired and the school was built, uh, for that purpose and had always been that way. He, he didn't think that there would be the, the sort of other use restrictions that would have snuck up in any way like a park. So, um, I just wanted to air that out because I, I do think that the purchase and sale agreement goes with the RFP to full council. And just in case it came up next week, I just wanted you to have some of that information.
Yeah. And my, my concern is not that it be a park, but if the language was that it be an education for educational purposes or an educational institution, that might throw a wrench into the, into the mix. And we really want to know that now as opposed to finding out after we go down the road and think we have something, but now we have to file suit in, in maybe superior court to, to resolve this. Uh, I'm not sure. Uh, or maybe a title examiner can somehow find a, a reason to make this all work. Uh, but I think it's hard if there was a, a, a reference to, for the purposes of, of educational purposes. And then you're stopping the educational purpose. That was the only reason to do that. But thank you for the work and for the, for the idea of putting this into the purchase and sales. I don't think it stops us from proceeding with the RFP. I would agree wholeheartedly. We were on, uh, entertaining the motion for presenting the RFP as described. Has amended this evening?
So moved.
Second.
Is there a drum roll somewhere? I feel like we've accomplished a lot of ground in this process. I think, I, I feel like we, we, we've given the community an extra, an extra opportunity to be sure that what we're putting forth addresses as many of the community's needs as possible in a way that I think gives voice to the greatest number of people. And I feel very good about that because I think, uh, oftentimes when groups are, can be formed and start rolling down the line and one or two people show up at, at meetings, uh, it may not be as, as broad as we need this to be. I think this is really an important step for the city that we're taking to create additional affordable housing, to create hopefully a reservation for those community needs that, uh, have been defined. The gym, the auditorium, the parking, the, uh, outdoor play spaces, the community connections. So I feel, I feel good about that. And I think we've done a good job with this and I'm very comfortable now moving this forward as far as the RFP is concerned. Uh, so I would call for Counselor Gomez's vote.
Aye.
Counselor Zaret?
Aye.
Counselor Krasinski?
Aye.
Nice job, everybody. Uh, I, I would also like to just discuss the weighting a bit if we may. Just to be sure we've dotted all our i's and crossed all our t's. I see Counselor Gomez's hand. I need those down. Would you?
Yes, I need, um, just for tomorrow's package, uh, Mr. Chairman, we need the, the version, the clean version of the RFP by tomorrow.
By tomorrow at 11 o'clock, I would say.
Yeah.
Emily, is that something that can be pulled together?
Yes, and we need it. Uh, the other thing is, uh, Jeff, I know there was a resolution in the package of June meeting about this. Do we need to read that at the full council again or no?
Yes, I would recommend in, in, in accompany the, the public hearing. So it was updated for, for today's packet that I sent you. So the resolution is pretty straightforward. And then there is the vote to surplus. Um, that it declares that the buildings are no longer used for municipal purposes and then to release the RFP. So those are sort of the actions that will come out of the public hearing. Um, so that is, that was included in the email today. So that's part of the, that's part of the, um, the, the city clerk would ask for that language be included in the packet tomorrow.
Yes, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, we had just received that after five, I, I found it after five, almost 5:30 today. I don't know when it, when it came in. But I think those are important things to review. And to make sure, I see sending out an RFP is one thing. And asking for proposals and entertaining ideas and another to declare a surplus properties, which I, I, I'm not sure. Um, I'm comfortable voting on declaring a surplus at this time. Are they, do, do you have to declare something a surplus before you send out an RFP? Or can the RFP go out on its own?
Um, Emily, do you want to take, I mean, our, I understanding has been that you need to declare it surplus in order to release it for proposals. So i- i- if I see nine heads, but I, I mean, Emily or Michael, um, if you want to confirm that.
You have to have site control. The first, the, the entity that's releasing the RFP must have site control, um, to, to put out their proposal.
I thought we received that site control when the schools declared the property surplus as for educational purposes and turned it over to the municipality. And now the municipality has site control.
Did the city council vote on that?
Yes, we did.
Yeah, I, I.
We voted, we voted to accept the school surplus.
I'll defer to Emily, Michael or, or whatnot, but site control, uh, I'll refer to, uh, defer to Emily and Michael on that, but.
I was going to defer to my, I'm, my memory is that you have to have declared it surplus before you put the RFP in the central register. But I would defer to Michael to confirm that because he's put more things in the central register.
That is correct. Uh, uh, legal authority, the city council needs to declare it, uh, available for disposition.
Yes.
Is the, is the, is the language they look for and or declaring it surplus and available for disposition.
And, and just to remind.
P, aren't we declaring it available for disposition?
The, uh, the law basically says for any disposition of real property, regardless of its value, you're required to dare declare that the property is available for disposition, which means it's surplus, basically, and determine the value of the property. Uh, we've determined the value of the property through the, uh, appraisals done by mass, mass development folks. Uh, but declaring it available for disposition and or surplus should be done as part of releasing the RFP.
And, and.
Generally is done, yes.
Yeah. And just to remind the counselors, remember this does, you know, when you get the RFP, you have full control of whether or not you then do the purchase and say, you know, accept the developer, then do the purchase and sale. So, um, the, the declaring it surplus is the step to get the RFP out there, but you still retain control over the, the process in terms of the final votes to actually, um, dispose of the pro- uh, property.
I, I'm just trying to clarify what control we really have over that, that process. My, my, I'm bringing up this because I'm wondering, uh, what the city will face next in the capital plans, in the ideas, whether or not, uh, what the needs are, the future needs of, of, of the community. And in order to truly declare it surplus means to say we have no, in my mind, we don't have needs. Maybe I'm mistaken. Uh, I'm thinking about our senior center. It, 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 it really is, I think, a building that ought to be looked at thoroughly and considered because it doesn't have any parking, it doesn't have, and I'm not sure how that dovetails with the over an acre that we have at Center Pepin, uh, would, would it, would it make sense? Are we going to find ourselves saying, oh my God, we, we sold, we sold, we, we, we sold, uh, Center Pepin and now we need to find a place for a new senior center because, well, we need one. Uh, and and, and, and if we should be thinking about evaluating whether that fit works as well as the fit. Or do we just say, well, we'll find another, another place for the senior center? Uh, or, or they can stay in a building that may end up being not utilized because of the deficiencies or the potential deficiencies. I mean, maybe I'm mistaken. Maybe that's not where we're headed. But if that is, shouldn't we confront that question now in terms of, or within the next several months? As we entertain, as send the. As we entertain, send the RFP out and get good ideas about how we can best utilize the property? Just a thought. Emily?
So perhaps just from the process side, I can clarify something. And then, um, uh, that would help, uh, um, uh, the mayor and, and uh, I think one of the counselors had their hand raised. Is your first saying, look, these properties are available for disposition. That allows you to get the information from the RFP. When that information comes in, you can look through it. You can make the evaluations that are important to understand what their preference would be. You might get a proposal for that community space that would allow you to address some of your concerns. But that process is going to take a couple of months, right? From the, from, um, uh, releasing the RFP to the point where it goes into the central register, there's going to be several months before the developers come back and give you. So that gives you the opportunity to have whatever other city conversations you need to have. But the available for disposition is not the same thing as disposing of it. And so it's when those proposals come back, you've had a chance to look, you've picked a preferred developer, you've done the negotiation with the developer. You feel comfortable moving forward. That's the point at which you dispose of the property. So I just want to separate the declaring it surplus is not the same thing as actually disposing of the property. You have many steps to go before you get to that point.
So we could declare it available for disposition? Is that what you're saying?
That's the declaration that it's a surplus to your requirements. Now therefore it is available for disposition. We're releasing the RFP to find out who else is going to use it, what they're going to use it for, and making that discussion.
Are you saying that the council declares it surplus or that the council accepts that, we've accepted that it's been declared surplus by the schools? And we've accepted control and responsibility for it.
But you still have to declare it available for disposition.
Available for disposition, I would say.
Which is the declaring it.
Saying a motion to declare it available for disposition.
Yes.
If that be the case. Uh, so if this, that moves the process along and puts us available for putting out an RFP at this time as described. Nicole, I see you patiently waiting. Thanks.
Yeah. Um, so around the council on aging, um, we've had a couple of meetings with consultants who did a study on the council, uh, council on aging, the needs, but also the physical building itself. Greg Nuttelman has walked through it with Cindy as well as Lindsay. And I'm, Greg and I sat down with Cindy today. Um, the cost of updating to the needs of the, um, of the community that includes two past studies for a COA, it'd be 13 to 15 million dollars to redo the existing building. And also it was recommended that another retrofitted building would not be appropriate and meet needs. Um, so, you know, just for the pencil of, as far as capital needs, we would look to improve bathrooms and security at the building because it's urgent need. But the, the director is presenting all of this to the board. I want to say next Thursday. I don't think it's this Thursday. I think it's next Thursday. But the consultants have come up and said a retrofitted building such as an old school would, would be very expensive and still wouldn't meet all of, of the needs of, of the senior center. Um, so that.
They, they took a look at the old school at Peppin and went through the building?
No, they said there was no point. A retrofitted building like school would not meet the current needs of the COA nor the, the future needs as our population over 55 expands.
Did they come up with any sites that might work? Because I certainly wouldn't build in the existing site.
They suggested that we start a separate campaign in that process similar to what the schools are because the process is so long. You know, we started in '08 with the, the Maple Street project and didn't get shovels in the ground until 2018. And the process is very similar to a senior center.
It would seem that whatever we do, we, it would be good to maybe look at some of the models around the country that have included libraries, senior centers, youth centers, the intergenerational spaces, uh, the activity, the communities, the community shared space.
That's a very difficult thing to do in the state of Massachusetts. And the communities that have done that recently, including Greenfield, have had to redo funding because they use funding outside of what was given for a elderly center. We, we actually had that exact same hope, um, counselor. And when we met with the, uh, the director today who looked at Greenfield because it's a very similar like half community center, half elder center. There is no such thing allowed in Massachusetts. It's an elder center or it's a community center. So they, they actually had to take down their sign that said community center, like to that point. And that was news to us all, um, in the last couple of days because again, it, it seems to make so much sense.
Thank you.
Yep.
That being said, I think we're ready to declare the property for dis, available for disposition. Is there a particular way we want to operationalize that with a statement? Declaring it available for disposition in a motion? Or would we not need to, to put a motion out there? Mr. Bag?
So, um, I think it's been a good discussion. I will just read the proposed motion just so we can have clarity on it. And I guess the only thing I would offer is that we should move forward towards the 21st with the idea that has been discussed and, and let the city attorney make sure that by the 21st, we have the correct language for consideration by the council. Cause, cause I think I've heard a, a, a few different things that I want to make sure that as the council, you have the right information moving forward. But the vote that was sent this afternoon, which was prepared by the city solicitor is to first declare the former schools as surplus property, not presently needed for municipal purposes. And so, you know, in his review, that, that was the language that was necessary for step one. Step two was then, um, to vote that the mayor for the city is authorized to circulate and publish as necessary the requests for proposals, including requirements under chapter 4, uh, 30B developed by the city as required by the laws. So those were the two motions that the city solicitor has provided. The nuance between whether it's available for disposition. Um, you know, I, I just want to make sure that if we move forward with that, that the city solicitor makes sure that that language is sufficient before the council votes next, you know, maybe next week after the hearing.
What's the pleasure of the committee? Shall we have another meeting to discuss this matter? Perhaps Monday? Shall we wait until the city solicitor gives something more definitive? I think we do want to be able to vote on this on Wednesday. If it didn't show up in the packet, I suppose Counselor Gomez, you, as president, you would have to say, okay, well, we waited and we approve it going in and being presented as a motion on the floor.
If I could, I, I would just add that this was pretty definitive by the city solicitor. I think the question that you raised was about the word surplus. And so um, I think that's the question that you've raised. I think the city solicitor had provided the language that he thought was necessary. But then I think you asked Counselor Gomez for some other information.
At, at this time, I'm okay with not having it, even no voting for it. I'm okay to, if we have it tomorrow before 11 to include it on the package and really to the full council, and the full council will decide to vote that, uh, the 21st. If we don't have it tomorrow, I'm willing to amend the agenda as a council president and include it, include it before the 21st. Uh, but if we can have it before, um, Friday, that will be better to put in there, in the package. Um, I don't think in my eyes is necessary to vote now, uh, tonight. I, uh, I mean, I'm only, only one member of this committee. If the committee want to decide to vote with no recommendation or, I don't know, whatever, whatever the chair, the chairman decide to do, I'm, I'm okay with it. But I, I think we can have those motions later on in vote on Friday, on Wednesday.
Counselor Zaret?
I would tend to agree. I think that if this is the recommended language by the city solicitor, I'd accept that. And, um, I don't have an issue with, with the language. So whether the committee recommends it or it's just a vote by the full council, I don't know if it makes a difference. So either way.
It sounds like there's some additional information that could come from the city solicitor and that would change things. I'm a little hesitant for us to vote on a recommendation only to have it changed. Uh, I'm much more comfortable, I think, with having it appear in the packet if it can be provided before 11 o'clock. Uh, and that gives Barb time to put it out there. And if not, then it'd be presented on the floor. So I guess I would leave that to the floor. Unless there's strong feeling otherwise. That being said, did we have any other businesses? Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Or are we? Counselor Zaret?
Yeah, second, sorry.
Are you sure? There's nothing else that we wanted to share. Again, Emily, thank you. Will you be joining us on Wednesday, I presume?
I will be joining you in person on Wednesday is the current plan. So I'm looking forward to meeting you all in person.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Uh, we have a motion on the floor to adjourn. Counselor Gomez?
Aye.
Counselor Zaret?
Aye.
Counselor Krasinski?
Aye.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks, folks.
Thank you.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.